Welcome to all who are here for the Euroboys Central School District Board Education Meeting. On the bell of the meeting's order. And our first item is to, uh, to executive session to, um, discuss negotiations and I am motion please. Discussion, um, paper. Okay, here we go. We're moving into executive session, we'll be back at seven PM for our regular meeting. Hello everyone, welcome to some of the common observant meetings. There are three important events. Regarding items that are on the agenda this Saturday to have us now agenda. Speaker pay off comments related to school operations and programs. Board commander personnel meeting against schools associated with school district, school system. Please keep aggressively concerned with the appropriate administrator. He wishes to be recognized to fill out the appropriate form and given at board district clerk as per policy. Committee published participation at four meetings. All the comments by the dressings is limited to fifteen minutes total unless the board has said it's not a meeting. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. Additionally, if more than three people makes it beyond a single topic unless the board also raises this limitation. This is a meeting held with public that will not be made. The key to a non-division file on the subject is the same thing. Districts now will follow up with new hearing. You have to sure to be careful to do it. Please demonstrate respect while speaking to me. Me personally ask for today to present to share your experience and celebrations. This is a live stream and recorded and posted on here. And I'd love to call up Connor and Savannah and Colin. Our students from the primary and you're going to be asked in the pleasure meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands white.
Who will be giving us our, um, can you record for me?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'm on my call.
I would like to just introduce my husband, Michael. So, uh, I mean, I've been. Hello, nice to see you, I see you. Facebook.
This should actually work pretty good if you want to stand up.
Yeah, you can stand up.
This is my old school. At the high school, the bar. Hello, my name is Marcus. I'm another junior. Personally, I did, uh, I'm embarrassed to be in this opportunity to speak. And then I realized this kindergarten, it hasn't been something I've ever. Yes, sorry. It's a great experience. As well so far. If I should play music and allow, um, in the best way, any music to hear. At the beginning, my friend, it's a bit odd, you know, having half the time not being able to be, uh, a music group or perform of like usual. Share the same passion. It's true that I grew my own, our own life. I was at Professor Boston College. I saw a choir, a choir and a love for music and culture. I saw first how music can change people's habits at Euroboy. Choir reading in class pool was look forward to. After here, Mr. Castle showed me how I become not only a great physician but also a great student. Later in the year. Yes. That ended up being one of the greatest decisions I've given. This is one of the so great director of the school. I also learned a very important lessons about being a working woman. Funny enough, I saw the same thing that I saw in the places like. That I saw in commercials for the music. Now, you. In the choir, and I've always looked forward to being in that band with Mr. Castle. Being in that choir, choir room that Mr. Castle. Music plays a very important part. All of my music, you know, that one reason. If you're playing the same. The community has had the same to be doing, like with the student. It is a feeling that you. Music is more than just listening. It's a love. And a lot of the students. They use this opportunity, I hope it is. Uh, anyway.
Were you going to take that?
Uh, no, I. Yes.
I think it was freezing after over there. Toy one moment and just. Firework on the up.
That's pretty good for freezing up those.
Well, just like your dad. Coming down to our hearings. Uh, we have two hearings tonight, but first one is our business administrator.
So, uh, we have prepared reserves within the district that are used for things that are, um, unanticipated. Not reserved. I asked for later this beginning as the number of points, twenty-four points are wanted to approve to use of. And access. Two thousand, uh, reserve was established by, uh, the Board of Education Resolution in two thousand eight. To create the reserve and then, uh. And in two thousand nine. So that was how the two thousand nine reserve was created. Same. And there's a summary of how it was created and was, uh. You do some things, not something you're planning. You should have an budget every year to do. You got things that are not typically occurring. I thought of this was about your. He wanted me to blue membrane over the. And we did. Money to have reserve. Um, certain not to see sixty thousand dollars and it knew that was a, uh, uh. Controller that was failed and we did that to eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Four, fifty, sixty thousand, sixty eight thousand dollars. Won't be actually about using, we'll say that around forty, three thousand, five hundred and one dollars. So we can develop and ask. Tonight, uh. September fourteen, there was a suicide that failed at the high school. Uh, Gary Brockley, uh, in the city, unfortunately, so it was probably. Uh, all bad news. Out of the weapons of certification, uh, early version also. And we were unsure how we're going to do next day because we came. Um, so we did pre-contract it fully about it. We had to do mostly work process here at field. On the scene with the. People in, um, they take that of the backyard. Your whole, I have a problem for. Up there, I think, and, um, finish maybe one. Very like, um, okay, did, uh, the running the next day, so.
Okay. Students weren't good, so we'll do that. Well, you guys, you know, the dad will focus. Um, so that, none of us are here. Hey, all right.
All right, cool, thank you. So I approve. We, uh, I have a thousand, twenty thousand dollars, two thousand, three hundred and thirty, and then we have that two twenty-two reserve. Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars because that is. Um, the question right now, um, is. Uh, who we want to establish a new reserve in the new place in May, uh, for the. So two, uh, the district has two R T's. And we have. Or some other, I think it's a good idea to put that on issue. In for many considerations or.
And you don't feel like that. Pretty lonely. You start talking about that in the chamber.
Any other questions on that activity or the use of that reserve?
Sure.
Still need to. Okay. Stop making. We, um, have, uh, yeah, I think it's nice to add in there. Um, the boy over there. And now you're doing the, uh, completion, third, going to farm. All that, so three, uh, thousand, fully funded. Run that or department and where we typically fund it is instead of putting money. Different reserve, we put into that reserve. Pass it. Always like getting one and that and then go off. Thank you. Thank you. Internet say, Dr. Griffith is going to present that shield or CDC, um, technology department. And so. So it's important technology.
So, uh, I'm just waiting a few seconds for the. The end. Uh, to show that our first most is to protect student information and, um, anyone also. We're looking at our information is, is, um. Is safe and as well as when students use our, our. Some that the searches that they do are. So we can see, that's why. Um, first, that's about technology and technology protection regarding, you know, internet access. So we work really closely with folks, these and they use a. It's, it really helps us. It protects all of our students and faculty who have or try to. On the school grounds or in your homes. Student or forgot their. They could still access their, their, um, personal drives, say with their family. But the minute they sign. Uh, school account, they are protected with filters. That. So, um. What we see from us is a daily report on any, anything. Normal, uh, or if we that might show that these students. Planings or self-awareness is providing that is dangerous. They can be a simple weapon. But also if they. If, uh, interested things that would, um, or not would be in our top. And so we get a daily report on specifically for those. And then, um, what happens is where technology team reviews that. And then, um, the principal of our technology investigating and progressive discipline is needed, um, that. What we do is, is that more students that have fallen into those situations, they're. Here, so, um, what it seems to be able to do this. Under network access, um. This is working with most. And what this requires our. We have to our students is change their password. That way we have less. Yes, a hundred percent, but the opportunity is, is less that someone would. Our systems. Uh, we are moving to, uh, to. Um, mainly because, uh, the center of security. Are now requiring, uh, uh, from, from our school districts in order for them to be sure. Uh, we're still in the process of that, it's gonna start with our. Um. Uh, you are saying that we have an internet policy, you can find that online. And we also use the help of the school, uh, education safety programs. Uh, for example, our faculty are aware of this, what's positive, our grant. We can, well, should be some other. And one is, uh, to, this is, uh, and it came out two years ago. And it really surrounds, uh, it really surrounds software that we. Um, produce, we send it out in region. So when we all look at our software, we, one of the questions that we have to ask the programs is. What information do you collect on this? And if it, um, collects and just say their name, then we require that in order for us to use it. Our path decided for track was stating that it will, um, it will follow the procedure. We had on the, being, if we are staff using and have to do it. So it's, it's an additional insurance. And any questions?
Um, are the, um, students really changing the spectrum?
Um, if the teachers change every three months, the students change every six.
It was a two factor. Where I'm like, go to site nine. How was students?
It will be for faculty and that's what. That's, that's the reason why there's the. We're, we're attempting to find other ways to do that two factor. Right now, the obvious thing is to you. Phone. That is useful. They can write it through email and do it multiple ways.
So if that is bothering, just.
Correct, so if they're using a home computer and they're using their Euroboy C S P. That is monitoring what they're doing at. And having Euroboy and they always.
Euroboy. Is that one still separate?
I don't, I don't believe so because it's not a separate. It, you wouldn't be, it was a first. Now, what, I'm into the Euroboy account.
But they got a computer running other program. Yeah, so you can, you can make. And if you're.
The way that you want the kids to know it, you can make where you're on your screen, you're on your computer, but you can make like. Another mirror image of your screen. You can log in on pretty easy. E D N's aren't all very powerful now, so you can have this multiple screens. Uh, so if we're on this one platform, then the Euroboy, you could have another platform or money if they split up their drives and do things like that. Um, why they do that, I don't know, is to log out and log on.
Yeah. So. So when, let's say they open up, um, I. On this edge, so if I, if I open up edge and I sign on to my Euroboy account, I could still have another edge, you know, open with my personal stuff. But when I'm on the edge one that's signed into Euroboy, that's being monitored and filtered for, for. The personal one at home is not, but if they try to do that here.
Could it change the, um, Google Drive? Functionality?
So when we went to the Google or for the teachers to be able to have their own Google Drives, it's still. System. In our district, they have Gmail accounts that are assigned to the district, just like a Microsoft. Our teachers and, and that, and, and principals, the, the students did not get one.
Okay, but it's not.
It is mine.
Okay, moving on to, we have seven more for discussion and for sharing. First, I was, uh, investor for.
I'm going to go on a little show play, but I won't talk about that.
You're, you're on the. I was gonna say it was fabulous, but I already said that a minute ago. So go ahead.
Uh, it was something that was fabulous and I like it. Yeah, yours was too.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up hours and the lines they have saying the number of lines. That was very impressive.
I don't really. Yeah. I know it's all. So it's nice to stay at.
Still to the last.
Yeah, it's Friday night. It was nice, uh, exactly, Saturday. Um, I don't think, um, Eric Mangle about, um, the bus. I didn't sure the driver, um, the bus. There's actually my kids lost. Not that, but, you know, she. Personally.
Two hours.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, so, but, um, you know, her focus was the students, making sure the students were okay and that she was a good person. Doing well and I can say we'll spoil that unless coffee is the entrance that we. Um, I guess I catch up with it.
Um. Uh, I was, uh, this conference is a big one to go over, but you did. Wait, his name.
I want to thank you for, too, because, um, multiple, one, four members were there at the drive up. And, and the amount of conferences and, and she was figuring that they have a whole day. Um, I think did a great job, people, yourself, and had different conversations while we were there. I didn't want to say he, once, because I was coming by you guys. Um, very good to see how we compared other places.
I did, we've been wanting to go in the next million, uh, I did, I have to save your tickets for one of the others.
Oh, it's all right.
And I have a lot of those tickets that I come up with.
For the, um. Harley, Madeline, the position of the speaking, um, the last quote that I heard from the. It reminds me that we have to probably be. Super search, right? Not almost that, but what was not that should be about us without us. And I thought that was a wonderful. Um, but I was also wondering, could we ever consider, um, offering sign language as a course?
Since I've been here, we haven't operated, um. Interestingly enough, American Sign Language is allowing me to steal others'. So, um, so it's just never been brought forth.
Oh, for, for my first.
Well, we. We have to do some research on it, what kind of certification it is. Um, and, and then we have to see, obviously, students, there's. Like move in any other course, cause we, we have. The courses that are run and, um, where does it come? We, and interest, and unfortunately, yeah, that, that. But it doesn't hurt research and it doesn't hurt to do some backup.
Another avenue to do that is those I can talk. So there's, there's a small interest, but being realized, there's only so many credits that they can fit into their schedule. That's another avenue, one, there's food and interest, they can take their experience and then the other bunch of people are interested, it goes for a while and. And it means.
It would, it would count as a foreign language then?
Not as a club, as a class, as a class, if it were a class, that would count, but not as a club, but it, well, it does seem you start small and give them.
Now, there is a former Euroboy student of graduate of Knick University who is sort of.
Uh, but also with the session about the.
See.
Texas shooting, I thought that, um, that was very interesting and they.
And I know that our school is setting the bar very high for keeping our students safe. Um, and I feel very comfortable, I think, that's it called this district and knowing that they're safe.
Well, it's really interesting to me to, to hear, um, a law enforcement agent walk us through with the incident. Um, and in point the different things that went wrong and to know that our district has things in place so that many of those things can't happen. Um, and, and things that could happen here would be, you know, because people aren't following through. They know what they're supposed to do, like secure doors, um, saying something, they say something immediately. Um, but I, I thought that, you know, it looked to me like we're in a pretty good position doing our own things for our community, for our students.
I, I, I think one of the things that, uh, really stood out for me in that particular session was just how in-depth those in charge were that were working. And the lack of following policies, you know? Doors were open, uh, strange people walking and you have, uh, an officer, security guard, right? Set up orders and that. Uh, I do, I, I also feel very comfortable given the, uh, ability to survive with that service here and their training for us to keep, uh, I, I just feel like we are still required, but well, you know, getting that, that's not, you have to be comfortable. We all, we all was. There is a bit of comfort even that we're really good at saying. And if you move on to that, um, I did notice you waited for one of those contract seminar, which, you know, we had used, you know, very well, basically, you got needed it. Did the savings that you learned around a particular project will be. One, one of the things I was a little disappointed in was the way the, uh, folks said and presented it. Um, they put out there that you would, you could get an additional 10% if you put a performance contract out for approval, um, performance contracts don't have, well, for approval. What if you do, you could take an extra 10%? Well, after the question being individuals a little further, you don't actually get an additional 10% over and above whatever. Um, you're not penalized 10%. So if you're at 70% reimbursement for state and then you do a performance contract, don't put it out for approval, you only earn reimbursement 10%. So, you know, I say, well, when they send that, I was not thinking like, oh, gee, yeah, that, that, that's, you know, maybe, but, but that wasn't, wasn't what it was. But still, a lot of good ones.
I have a colleague that, um, it was student selling that had a report, um, who had started with a club and it turned into a class of work student activism as part of their steal of civic revenues, which I thought was interesting because we just talked about that. Um, so, uh, and so I guess see what they're doing selling of, how they are approaching student activism. They had three really, um, lots of open meetings that were told about the different projects that they were doing as part of their classroom, senior classroom, um, course. And that was, um, that session. Um, I know please isn't here, but I'm sure that if she were, she would be talking about musical again. Um, it was, um, different than it's been in the past. They changed the. I feel like I said a lot. I feel like it's overwhelming how much we get.
Well, uh, well, one of the things that, that, uh, and it wasn't in a seminar, but just, uh, talking with the very vendors who were there, um, I gained an awful lot of knowledge, uh, a lot of, uh, stuff. Um, some of the information that we've been given in the past, uh, not have been, you know, quite accurate. So we were actually talking with individuals who were dealing with, you know, like, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, actually the, the past, you know, and more stuff. So that, that was, I felt a lot of problems. I mean, uh, I mean, we're, you know, okay, the question things like that, that, that was going to be able to, you know, that, that need and stuff is just not true.
But I think what was interesting, what he said over there, one was that, you know, there's funding out there, but all of the funding, I don't know how many times we do like, where it seems to keep going to the other end of the state. Um, so, you know, they go over funding because this is not an easy thing to do it. The other thing that he said is that there's three new batches that apply office to all districts in New York State. He said, all of us, there's no way that we have any buses and partnering with the state. So I don't agree with it anyway. That asked. I said, but, and he said, no, no. She used to be a, yeah, colleagues or, I don't know. So I'd like to.
Yeah, exactly.
Or you start making, he said, hundreds of thousands.
Well, probably, you know, six months separate to roll it out. I think that's.
Watson, that one, which is, um, state, where the all coaches go and officials, because they are completely enlightened. Um, and they suggest they deserve a teacher. The courage that is also involved in, you know, coaching. Um, but also, um, looking at the AirPlay and, and, and. And that there's a, it's a next, I think, he's, I, he put that for our spectators as well. Um, I'm sure the coaches, make sure that these spectators are aware of their responsibilities on the sideline. You know, play, go home to the home, um, so that. Because if, if, without sports, you know, I think that's, um, I could, it's a team, uh, pro, um, that has sports. But I mean, the coaches, you know, huge decline. Um, and then also to remind us that there's a website, uh, for all, for all sorts of different sports. Um, maybe they don't read it very well. Or how, because there are people that, um, work during that, you know, that's. That's unfortunate, really. I mean, it's not that the coaches always have that help. Spectators, you know, so, um, yeah. Figure out a way of getting more people. So for me, from the AirPlay point of view, we're not short on coaches right at all, are we?
We do scramble for different positions and it's really hard if you have a coach profile in either position. Has there never been a room, a lot is coming from JBL, ours, that's how it's done. Uh, probably had some long, some negotiations to serve as a, in the, and ours, it is, and the book higher than these, but all. So, so, I, I didn't, we have a coach for every sport. But I also know that it would be nice to have these security, they're always going to have a coach for every sport and not worry about when someone retired and it moves out there. It's scary.
Are we permitted to have a official?
No, usually, not that I know of. Usually they work out, um, baseball sometimes, uh, not playing, I suppose, that's where they see that greatest issue. Um, maybe softball too, but I wonder about. Uh, I hope. You're, you're ready to cancel. Yeah. But it's, and we're in good locations. We want to go further out and if you try and get it, we're very competitive to, and I know there's other schools that instead of two, instead of two, that's. So it's. It's not something you can count.
Our coaches are doing pretty amazing. Just saying, I can keep track of all the sports. Sports are still going on.
Yes.
I can keep track of it, so.
Um, so, ECASB, they did end up canceling the M standard. Um, there was a issue with my speaker. So that is, we still, so we have to spring. Um, and legislative practice is coming up. We will be, uh, meeting with Senator Galvin, he's going to be there. Um, and, um, there are two other assembly people coming that are, which I'm, uh, Congress, um, and then there are the summer first editors and if there was, uh, I have the, um, Amanda Wuzikovich, um, who's the resident of our district, uh, is the legislative director. Last week she'll be there. So, um, we do have, um, a few legislators that are coming for us in here, and they're going to be having twenty four people. And so that's a really nice set.
I want to say eight minutes.
Um, so the legislative practice is not really deep. Um, that's. And then it kind of gets, uh, wait, December first, there's a speed war, and then I think it gets now out. So if you, if you want to register for that, actually, like, or not, so let's just, like, through our, our, our SVP. And it does get quiet for a little bit during the conference. And, you know, it's very, um. Which brings me to our advocacy scene today discussion. Um, I don't know how to talk a little bit at the, uh, at the, at the conference. We said conference. Conversation to go over and talk about the idea of forming an advocacy committee. We have, uh, Jim, who serves as our legislative board was kind of the board, he's here. Um, but in our next meeting, I'm sure, you're, you're honestly sure we talked about the, um, being voted with, or, and stuff. And, um, listening to what others, uh, districts thought and how diverse they were and how they actually spent time talking about the different issues, um, and, and coming to some decisions together as a group. Um, and I was thinking, we've had some of the characters in the conference, um, that perhaps we should be looking at having some kind of debate. Uh, I know Matt here has one, um, that's from, uh, the delegate to the representative to ECASB. Um, and they have a board member that, that, um, and they invited the PTO, they invited students to sing with them at this great event. Um, and then they also, for example, they invite, um, their assignments, um, to representative comes in and it's, we can try out any CBA's or anything. So, um, that's, that would be a good conversation to have, um, since, since it turned into something that we want to do, I guess, but I do think that, uh, some of the things that we talk about here and are, are concerned about, um, funding and are concerned about, well, I think most of the things and whatnot, um, they're not being mentioned about our meetings. We need to pay attention to our meetings, every letter that needs talking to legislators and actually the justice going to the reference comes to the years it is. Um, so I'm asking the board to consider forming a legislative or advocacy committee that, um, would then work. Where some of the people here, the benefit funding to the letters, right, that maybe within private brothers and legislators that they would invite to come to our meetings, to come, you know, to hear the outcomes of our discussions.
I definitely think it's, uh, you know, valuable more information you can get out to, you know, all legislators holders, uh, better off than we are. Um, I think we just would use this firsthand with ECASB, which is a much larger organization that you're certain of, and even, even with that, it's very, very hard to get the legislators to listen and to, to move on those issues because we simply just don't represent enough votes or those legislators. It, it's, it's shitty my couch it that way because I would always hope that the representatives that need to like it were there to represent us. And one of the issues that at all of our legislative to be our state has is to provide funding and education for all children in our district. And if it wasn't, it's still, we had some really big wayward, great issues and other groups got involved. If anything was, was changing at all. So anything that we can do is to expand our voices and, I mean, our, our stakeholders, our community members, they're the voters, they're the ones that are representing votes and action. A number of years back, when we would do our, um, okay, the session, we always talked about our legislative representation and why we were always, you know, so concerned that budget time to just try to maintain the education law for putting these here at school, let alone add more for us to do this. And it, it, it was just a, I don't know. It, it's sitting on a board and having made those kinds of, you know, decisions just to be, is, is not what we're all here for. So when we can expand those voices in your parents, represent those seniors that are eighteen, they all represent those. When you have parents and teachers and all those school or members involved with the, uh, uh, yeah, illumination, testing, all that, that's when things change. So if we can garner, you know, that kind of push, you know, from all of our community members, from, from our voting community, that makes a difference as far as our legislators go. I mean, it's, I remember meeting with, uh, Senator Galvin at various things and he always knew when we had a board meeting because the next day he had a ton of emails from folks in our district, just because we put that out there. So if we, I, one of the, and, 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 you know, our, our stakeholders and, you know, our, our PTO's are a great place, you know, start with, you know, our boosters, our, our other place, I mean, it's more, more well. It's, it's almost sudden arise, you know? You see that yet for years and years and, you know, they had that there, but as soon as it's all get right, all of a sudden arise, open, and we do this.
So what, yeah. So what is that like? The intel like, is it weird?
They once, uh, virtually, um, and they spend no more than an hour just talking about different needs of the district and how we can advocate for them with the, a sample of members, um, eight, eight, uh, she's, uh, on a handwriting and she asks for questions and, um, they all talk a lot and, uh, I think it's actually representative for ECASB. I'll talk with, uh, you know, some kind of, sort of saying this is what we.
I'll talk with, you know, some kind of, sort of, saying, this is what we're talking about when we, we swear our ass. And it's definitely seeking these things that the district needs, so. We should see. Um, and every now and again, it's the, 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 we just talk about E C S D. Say, this is, you know, something that we're talking about, it's not just our district, it's the whole district. Of her going here, this is under, uh, the, our, and we're, and I said, we're talking to their, their adult, and, 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 and on, we're the same message. From some places, some, uh, that, 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 and the P T O, they're understanding why, why we're, it's happening, so they're saying, well, he's, and now this P T O, or, that, we can go back to, to, they can tell them, they're communicating with us for, um, so, and so forth, so many voices. Can I do this twice with that?
Many, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, um, and that's, we tend to move it, you know, it would, right, uh, uh, care, I think, three or four people, you know, write, I'd write letters back. You know, I, I, maybe somebody would just like to write a letter, you know, the, 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 hold on.